I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am John Allen, and I would like to affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties
faithfully discharge the duties.
Of city council member
Of city council member.
For the city of Linsburg so help me God. This time, here are some citizens that would like to be a part of public input. Mike Arson.
Thank you. I'm here because I think you're on the cusp of making a decision, and I think it's as big as they are. And I'm glad Chief Burgen is here because thirty years ago, when the fruit of my loins was a teenager, I had numerous encounters with Chief Burgen, and he had a very light touch. And although there were times I wanted to bring my son's neck, he'd always pull me back, and there was a real concern for the fact that, you know, hey, they'll grow out of it. And I always admired that. He didn't seem to relish what he had to do. And I finally retired some faculty in the community full-time. And what I've seen from the local people is that same light touch. And I've never heard anyone have a bad word say about anybody on the police force. And I'm always listening for bad things. And I just, I don't understand why all of a sudden we're interested in somebody that's coming from a city of, I believe, 100,000. I could be mistaken, but I think Whittier was about that size. One thing about Whittier is Nixon was from there. And I just, I don't understand unless there's something that I'm not aware of that the local people have not done and done faithfully. And I just, I just think this is kind of a slap at what they've done. And where I came from, if you didn't get promoted when the guy ahead of you moved on, then that's kind of like saying, well, you know, you're not really up to it. And I take it that way. So, anyway, I would say, I would think long and hard about it. I think we got a good thing here. And I really can't put an eye on me see what someone from a larger environment can bring to our city, because I like our smallness. And in fact, we are a small town. And God, I hope we don't change. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mike. Erica, what do you think?
Good evening. I kind of want to second what I said. I just have a lot of concerns that two local officers who have given so much of their time and talents, not only as officers, but as citizens of our community. I just feel like when they get go, they were kind of set up to not apply. The job description only included one local officer that would have met that description, and he was not interested in applying. I believe it was because many people reached out to the council people that the job description was amended, which allowed for two people within the force to apply, which was great. And then I just felt like this end result was just kind of a courtesy interview. And I've been told by some people it wasn't, so it was taken seriously. But I just know that no references were checked. That bothers me a lot. And the job description itself, who has been the man who has been kind of appointed or not officially hired, whatever you call it, but that he didn't even need those qualifications because it says they have to be paid or to be qualified or certified, and he hasn't yet. And so that's just concerning that we would hire someone who didn't need a job description. And so those are just kind of my big concerns. And I feel like we are really missing the vote on a couple of great local officers who have done so much already for our community. We know what we're getting. They're wonderful. They're dedicated. And so I appreciate listening. Thank you very much.
Zach, maybe?
Just a little bit of that. I feel my sentiments are a lot like theirs. We moved our small child here twelve years ago. We started school here. The local officers that we have now, no matter where we go, where we are, those guys say hello to our children. They know his name. They know our families. Everybody in this room. And I also feel, along with a lot of people in this community, that our local officers were set up in the beginning to not have an opportunity. It was only opened up later to show that they were given an opportunity. I don't know what anybody else can bring to the table, but these local officers can. They're EMT. They're firefighters. They're born and raised here. They graduated from our high school. They watch our children every single day and protect us. I don't know what anybody else can bring, but they can. I think the community wants to know what set this guy up in our life. And I think we'd like to know.
David, please?
Good evening. I believe most of you received the email that's in outside. I won't really go on into much. I feel the same sentiment that everyone else has expressed so far. And I would just ask you guys to really think long and hard. And again, maybe there's something we don't know. And if there is, that's great. But the two guys that applied that are local, I just don't see a reason why we would not have considered, I guess we consider them, but why they wouldn't have been hired. And so they're good enough to be at work forces, but they're not good enough to lead us. And so I just really ask that you guys please consider that when you're making this decision today, and whatever happens, happens. But we hope the best for us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to say something? Do I hear any votes? Members of the agenda?
I don't know.
There are none? The mayor's report. This 2019 is drawing to a close. I feel it is prudent that we reflect upon what has occurred in Linsburg this past year. A wonderful year-long celebration of Linsburg's 150th anniversary was celebrated. Thousands of citizens and visitors took part in various events that helped to underscore what a special place Linsburg is. Thank you to the committee and to all who gave of their time and money to make it a time that is now written into the history books. Thanks to all of our citizens who have served and are continuing to serve on many committees and boards. Their input is invaluable for our city council, the department heads, and employees in making decisions to help Linsburg continue to grow and develop into an exemplary example of a community of the future. A hearty congratulations to Bethany College, as they are now being led by Dr. Beth Mock, interim president. As Linsburg and Bethany College have grown and developed together, a salute to them and a thank you to their board of directors, alumni, faculty, staff, and students for continuing to make us more diverse and providing a quality education for the past 138 years. So many good things have happened in our little community. We have approximately 3,500 residents. We've opened a new addition to our in-town trail, a new addition to our Linsburg Hospital with the generosity of David Nutt, many record-breaking crowds at our festivals, new businesses opening, new homes being built, upgrades to our infrastructure, announcement of a new housing development, Stockholm Estates, and so many more important happenings have happened in Linsburg in 2019. So indeed, 2019 has been one for the record books. One of Linsburg's earliest founders was a man named Olaf Olsen. He was 28 years old when he arrived here. He brought with him an infectious sense of adventure. He called it a Swedish term called "frontisland," the land of the future. So as the calendar turns from 2019 to 2020, I hope we have the same sense of adventure as we begin to plan for the next 100 years. None of us in this room tonight will probably be here in 2120, but the foundation and why its decision-making will impact our Linsburg of the future. Again, thank you to all who have continued to volunteer, lead, participate, and invest in this place that we call home, Linsburg. Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Do you move and second to approve the consent agenda, Rockford?
Yes.
Rebecca? Mark?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Next, under appointments. At this time, I would like to appoint Michael Davis to the position of Director of Public Safety and Chief of Police. I would like to read his bio. Michael Davis has 28 years of law enforcement experience. He began his career with the Orange County California Sheriff's Office in 1991, where he served for four years. In 1995, he went to work for the Whittier California Police Department, where he served for 24 years. He rose through the ranks from sergeant to lieutenant to captain. His responsibilities during his career with the Whittier Police Department encompassed patrol, investigations, supervisory, budget management, administration, and management. Mr. Davis has taught administration of justice course for 17 years for the Tri-City's Regional Occupational Program. In 2018, he was named the Teacher of the Year in this program. Mr. Davis has several peace officer training standards and testing certifications. The basic one, the intermediary post, the advanced post, the supervisory post, and the management post. Mr. Davis has a Bachelor of Science in Business Management and a Master's of Business Administration. The citizen interview panel, I'd like to explain how his appointment came about. The citizen interview panel consisted of representative of the Smoky Valley School District. They were represented by Mon Couchman, the interim president Beth Mock of Bethany College, Captain Bruce Hyman of the Kansas Highway Patrol. Linsburg Community Hospital was represented by the Ring Englers. Veridian Behavioral Health was represented by Summer Olson, city administrator Greg Dumars, and Mayor Becky Anderson. Out of many applications, five candidates were selected to be interviewed by this panel. The each, the five candidates met with this panel over a two-day period. Each of them were asked various questions by people on the panel. At the end of that process, there was a question asked with everybody there. Do you have, who would you recommend? And it was a unanimous decision to recommend Michael Davis. So at this time, I would like to appoint Michael Davis. I am looking for a motion to approve this appointment.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Michael Davis as the Director of Public Safety slash Chief of Police.
Do you second?
Second.
We moved and seconded to approve Michael Davis as the Director of Public Safety and Police Chief. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. I'd like to open that to discussion before you actually vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I will say that I'm retired law enforcement, 38 and a half years. And looking at their credentials here, these are not easy credentials to obtain. Granted, some of this was in California versus Kansas. However, they're very similar. These types of certifications are not just handed out willy-nilly. These types of certifications have to be earned, and you have to take the classes to earn those. So I wasn't on the interview panel. I kind of wanted to be, but the mayor didn't ask me. However, I, looking at this, having had a discussion about it, and knowing the process that went through, knowing that it was an hour and a half, thereabouts, interview process, I feel comfortable with the recommendation.
Any other discussion?
Well, and just to clarify, there was an interview process. Mayor, I think I had one, two, three, four, five. Did I miss? I have six of them. Was there, there was seven-person panel?
Yes.
Okay. And the interview process brought each candidate in for an hour and a half?
Yes.
Questions were asked from all those on the panel? And from that discussion, and from each of those interviews, they were asked to name a candidate. Is that correct?
They were. And all people that were on this committee, this panel, were attendants, were attending every interview. They were there for both days. I think it's also important that the community understands the seriousness that we took in this search. We know what our community feels about safety. It comes through loud and clear in our community surveys. People talk about it all the time. It is something that is foremost in our mind as we were about to appoint this person after having enjoyed Tim Burgen for lowly many years. And so we knew that we wanted to reach out to the whole community. And so we looked to the institutions of our community to say, help us make this decision. And they all, nobody turned us down and said, no, we don't want to be a part of this process. So I think that is, I think that speaks very well. I was very happy to see the caliber of candidates that we did have. As I said, we interviewed five and came to the unanimous decision that Michael Davis was the person that we wanted. So any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you to everybody that came. I mean, I love this town. I think it's amazing that they come to, you know, to bat the guys. I guess my opinion is that even if we deny the appointment today does not mean that one of them would assume it. And so to me, I don't know if it would be worth letting this guy go if some, that's going to be the unanimous decision.
Any other discussion? Hey, all those in favor of appointing Mike Davis? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
There is one, one, no. Mike, you're hired. Would you like to say some words?
Sure. Wanted to jog things down. I had a mistake in the lady's name on the first off. Want to say good evening to the mayor and all the council members, all the community members who came out and spoke. I know it's tough. To me, it shows that they care about their police department, that they want to get up here and speak, and I appreciate that. And I hope through my actions and through my time here that I can earn that respect and trust that Chief Burgen got. Before I go any further, I'd like to introduce my family that is here. I have my wife, Marissa, my son, Michael Jr., my daughter, Cassandra, my other daughter, Erica, and my grandson, Jackson, and my son-in-law, Cory. Next, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council and our city administrator for the confidence that they put in me in selecting me to serve as a Linsburg Chief of Police and Director of Public Safety. I also want to take this opportunity because it's only fitting to congratulate Chief Burgen on incredible career. I mean, 34 years of law enforcement and 21 as the chief is absolutely incredible. Let's speak to his character. So congratulations to Tim. And he's been an absolute, he's become a friend over the week I've been spending with him, as he's been imparting his knowledge, and I thank him for that. But following in his footsteps is not going to be easy. Someone who's served at duty as long as he did is not going to be a simple task. He's leaving behind a legacy of relationships and service that cannot easily be duplicated. But I humbly accept the passing of this torch and promise to work at building this community's trust and respect in me as I look forward. The mission of Linsburg Police Department is to provide services in a professional and ethical manner that is designed to protect life and property, thereby improve the quality of life within the city of Linsburg. I have spent my entire adult life in the service of either my country or my community, starting with my military service at 17, and then just ran through my bio with the Orange County Sheriff's Department and the Whittier Police Department, and now with the city of Linsburg. I want the council and community to know that I'm completely committed to this mission, and I work diligently towards meeting all the expectations of this council, of this community, and especially of those officers I work with. With that, I thank you for everything. Thank you for the opportunity.
I, Michael Davis?
I, Michael Davis.
Please solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas
And faithfully discharge the duties
And faithfully discharge the duties
Of police chief and director of public safety
Of police chief and director of public safety
For the city of Linsburg so help me God
For the city of Linsburg so help me God.
It's about the seal.
That's right.
All right, here is another appointment that I would like to make. This would be appointing Ed Poe to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ed is a current professor of Bethany College, so he's been in Linsburg a number of years. He has expressed an interest in serving on this. So if I could hear a motion to approve Ed Poe to the position on P and Z.
Seven.
So a second?
Second.
Do you move and second to any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you to Ed for the comments. I do want to just insert a little thing right here. For people at home that would like to be on a city committee, please let us know. Contact either your council members here or look on the city website and volunteer your time. And you're always needing people to be on various committees and boards. So as the new year begins, maybe this would be something you would like to do for your community. All right. Is there any old business? Oh, no, area. Is there any P and Z?
No, we're bare.
All right. Any old business?
No old business.
New business. Serial malt beverage license. The city has received two applications for serial malt beverage renewal from Casey's and from Pizza Hut. All applications have been reviewed by the police department and background checks completed. All the cross-border application fees have been received. All right, so do I hear a motion to approve these two applications?
So moved.
Do you move? Is there a second? Move and second to approve these serial malt beverage licenses? Can we just do the voice vote, or do we have to do a?
No, you can do voice votes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Next item is the 2019 sales tax transfer.
Local sales tax is about a half percent. The half percent is allocated to specific line items. The one percent is a three-laded proportion, property tax relief, economic development, and infrastructure. We don't have the December sales tax numbers yet, so I'll be coming back in January with the final report. But preliminary right now in your packets is the sheet that shows the 2019 local sales tax allocation between the one-half percent and the one percent. It also shows capital items that were purchased during the year in the general fund. The capital items, the total dollar amount exceeds the total collected in the half sales tax. So normally, we would ask for a $50,000 transfer to either capital improvement reserve or equipment reserve that is supposed to be each year. But since the capital items exceed the amount of the local sales tax, I'm asking that that the transfer not be made. That is my first request. The second request is Substream Conference Center is a very viable and economic product in the community. However, on its standalone, it operates at a loss. So as far as an economic development portion of an accident sales tax, I would ask that you approve an amount sufficient to cover the final loss amount of the Substream Conference Center. Now, because it's in the general fund, there would not be a transfer between funds. It's just the bookkeeping entry. And when I come back in January, we will know the exact amount. So number one, I'd ask that would you not do a $50,000 transfer to reserve funds? Number two, that would cover sufficient funds to cover the operating loss of the Substream Conference Center.
All right. Can these be done in one motion, or do we have to do them?
You can do it in one.
Can, in one. All right, do I hear a motion to approve what Larry has just lined up?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Sorry.
All right. Do you understand that we can leave this in?
I did.
It has been moved and seconded to approve this. Any discussion?
Mayor, what's the current deficit this year for Conference Center?
Right now, it's about $35,000, which is the lowest deficit we've had since children.
And that money comes from the general fund?
It comes from the one percent sales tax in the general fund, yes. It would come from the one percent sales tax in the general fund, yes.
Any other discussion? Since we're not really spending money, can this just be done on a voice vote?
Um, no, I don't think so. I think you want to do this on a vote.
Ed?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Motion is approved. The cost of living allowance.
Um, annually, city council reviews the cost of, uh, cost of living allowance. What we use as a benchmark has been the consumer pricing index for the Midwest region. We use the November index. That's the most recent one. And currently, for Midwest, it is 1.9%. From a budget standpoint, in the current budget, we had budgeted the quality increase at 2%. So, the recommendation is a motion to approve a 1.9% cost of living allowance increase back in January 1, 2020 for all regular full-time employees.
Some of them- It's been moved, is he a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve a 1.9% cost of living allowance. Any discussion? All right, here are none. No.
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Next item is the 2020 legislative priorities.
Presented in the packet is the 2020 proposed legislative priorities. Some of them are saying, are the same as 2019. These are the priorities we use when we advocate to the state legislature. The items that are the same are home rule, the repeal of the tax leg. There's actually a possibility of repealing the property tax leg. Tourism, tourism as an economic development tool. Internet sales tax collections, where we are actually collecting and receiving the sales tax on goods and services purchased over the internet. Also, the health and wellbeing and quality of life issues within the community. New issues or new items to bring forward are for 2020 are high-quality childcare and seeking avenues from the state to help make that happen. Property valuation, there's talking about putting caps on property value, particularly when it comes to larger commercial properties where they would be not valued at the market value of the property, but at a capped value. Budget timeline, currently, the way we have to have a budget adopted and submitted to the county clerk bill later than August 21st of each year. Due to publication guidelines of a hearing, all of those issues, we're actually adopting a budget or having a budget ready by the end of July of the year prior to it going into place. The request is to the state will be to extend that deadline of when the budget actually has to be submitted. We still have to meet the guideline of what property tax we're looking to assess, but the full budget doesn't have to be adopted and submitted until November prior to the year that it will be governing. The last one is regarding EMS and hospital funding and the request that the state participate in Medicaid funding. Not only does it impact the hospital and the funding that they receive, currently, no funding is coming into the state of Kansas to help offset those expenses. Additionally, from the EMS standpoint, which we run a razor-thin budget on, in fact, the last three years, we've lost money and been spending in the red. This funding is essential for both the health of the hospital and also for the EMS service. So, the recommendation is to approve the 2022 Lindesburg legislative priorities. It will be repackaged, so it'll look a little nicer than what is presented in the packet. But that is the recommendation, and I guess, best for motion and any questions.
Do I hear a motion to approve this, the 2020 legislative priority?
Second.
Is he a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Let me just say, when the legislature returns to Topeka in January, we will, we as a community, through our representatives here, will be invited to go to Topeka and meet with our senator and representative. And one of the things that they, we have received a lot of compliments on is that this, as Greg said, this is a repackage. But we can hand them this piece of paper that very clearly defines what we, as a council and a community, what are the important issues for us. And both Stephen Johnson and Rick Wilborn, they have said, "This is so good to have it quantified, it's there." So, I think this is a really important piece of work that our city administration has done. And, and I hope that you, I don't know, Roxy, do we have a date when the lead, the city of Kansas lead municipal alage?
Yes.
I'm not sure what date is, but-
I don't have a calendar here.
Twenty-first of June, I think.
Close. Twenty-second.
All right. You know, it's, it's going to Topeka and coming back in one day, of course. And, but it is a very important time to be there and going and talking to the very, our representatives and senator, as well as other department heads. So, I hope you all at least consider being, paying attention on it. Any other discussion about this legislative priorities? All right. Motion, moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is approved. City Hall access management system.
So, the agenda, I can prepare outlines a little bit. The idea is to have key cards that would allow entry to the building. There'd be one reader at the, this north door, and then there'd be a reader for this room, for, um, for the middle door downstairs, for the door in the IT room, and then for the executives in the conference room upstairs. And part of what this will allow is, for example, when community groups use this room, this system would allow us to either attach very defined permissions to a key card, or we might even just set up to where, you know, if yoga's at five o'clock, you can enter the building from four fifty, well, that's a terrible example. If yoga's at six o'clock, you can enter the building between five fifty and six ten, and that door, that door would then just automatically lock at six ten. It gets very ridiculous, but it allows us to much better control access to the building without having keys out in the community, which eventually sets up some security problems in lots of ways, as we call it, I imagine. We had, the process was to see what other cities were using, what they were happy with. We had seven coming through chapter, and we had three that were able to respond on, it was a pretty tight timeline that we put together. Three that responded on that timeline, came out, toured, and gave us bids. And one of the bids was, notice were lower than the other two. So, we, I call references because it, just make sure that they won't know what that was. And the references were, references from God's School District, and then the city of Mulvane, and it was the Public Safety City of Mulvane who had also been applying before, which was one of the other cities. And so, long track record with Gateway Wireless and had only very positive things to say. Not only is the front cost very competitive, but the ongoing costs are also very competitive. A service called from Gateway Wireless will run approximately eighty dollars, and others, a service probably five hundred dollars. So, feel like this is a very competitive service that should serve well.
All right. So, the motion is to approve eight thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars for an access to the management system from Gateway Wireless.
Smooth.
Is he a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve this. Any discussion?
I would just like to make, confirm that, that I'm doing the right thing here. One of the bids that was submitted, not the one that is being, has to be approved here, was from the company that I work for. So, is it still okay for me to vote on this, or would I be, I would suggest that you abstain? Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? Roxy? Rick?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Eon?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Blake?
I'm staying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luke, as motion of approval. City of Lindesburg employment agreement, I'll ask Rick Martin, as president of the city council, to speak.
We sent out information, or sent out questionnaires to department heads and all the council. We had 100% return from everybody, so I thank everybody for that. We did meet in an executive session to discuss this. So, that would lead to a lot of detail about that. I'd like to just make a motion that we approve the employment agreement between the city of Lindesburg and city administrator Gregory Marsh.
Do you have the motion?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor, just a comment, though there is a typo in here. I reviewed this and apparently fell asleep when I was looking at the time period this contract was written for. We need to change that to 2020 rather than 2019 in paragraph three.
Okay. The initial term of this agreement shall be from January 1, 2019 to December 31, should be January 1, 2020-
Correct.
-to December 31, 2020.
Correct. Otherwise, it's already pretty well done. Just take a fourteen. You wrote that.
So, do we need, for Vic, to read?
Yeah, it'd probably be better if we brought this, restated motion, if the second agrees.
Okay. I would make a motion to withdraw my motion with the second. Would be seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your motion?
Okay, new motion with the corrections as noted, motion to approve the, to approve the employment agreement between the city of Lindesburg and city administrator Gregory Marsh.
Wait a second. Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussions? Here are none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Well, congratulations. We got it done.
Thank you very much. Good for the mayor.
All right. There is no other discussion. Any other others?
I have a couple of items. One, I have a, it was a part of the payables. We have, well, as part of fire insurance proceeds, when there's a fire, a structure, 20% of proceeds come into the city to hold, to make sure that the work gets done on, in rehabilitating property or tearing it down. We have a, uh, proceeds that we need to return to the property owner in the amount of $3,835.27. It would be to R.D. Rasmussen, and I need to see if I can get this through so that we can return these funds to him.
Do I hear a motion to approve this?
Second.
Is he a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Do we have to do a roll call on this? All right. Roxy?
Eon?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Any other?
One other item, let me find where that is. Asked out to each of you, I've been asked to present this to you from Dance and Miracle, a letter concerning the fish pond in Swinton Park. I won't read it to you since you all can read, but for, for the audience, the request is that the fish pond not be replaced with the Alm Swinton Garden. That while they appreciate the fact that Alm Swinton is part of the history of Lindesburg, they feel that that fish pond is a very strong part of the history of Lindesburg, also, and that they would ask that the fish pond remain in, in the, be repaired.
All right. Is there any other? Just a reminder, there's the Cora meeting tomorrow for anybody who's interested in six to eight. I know that, Rick, and Michael and myself, everyone. So, if there's anybody else that-
Cora has.
Kansas Open Records Act.
Correct.
Gary, is there a planning and zoning meeting coming up?
There's a flat, preliminary flat hearing on the 7th of January. That was published in the paper last week as a public notice. It's, it's an important meeting. This is a large subdivision that's planned for the east side of town. And we invite public comment on the process. The last preliminary flat hearing that we had last year, we actually had a lot of public comment that helped shape the eventual final flat for that, of maybe, so.
And where?
It'll be at here at the city council chamber on the 7th of January. It's a Tuesday at 7:00 p.m.
That's every meeting. So, everyone is denied to that, except for the city council, if you want to do it. Any other? Ed, you haven't had a reference? You want to have a motion?
I'll move to adjourn. Second.